Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alred.
Here.
Mr. Andreessen.
Here.
Mr. Fell. Mr. Hopkins. Ms. McFarland. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Yu.
Okay, so it looks like we have a quorum. Are any changes to the agenda? Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Approval of the minutes. So we have two previous meeting minutes to approve. Approval of the minutes of the February 8th regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the minutes from the February 8th meeting?
I move we approve the minutes of February 8th.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion of the minutes? Any changes? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Approval, excuse me. Approval of the minutes from the February 22nd regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the minutes from the last meeting?
I motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sims. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Andreessen. Any discussion of the minutes from the February 22nd meeting? Any changes? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Communications. Do we have any communications?
Yes, since the last meeting on February 22nd, we received communications regarding the two public hearings tonight. To summarize, there were two more communications that were in favor of the rezoning of 205 North High Cross. There's one communication that was against the rezoning and also against the text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Continued public hearings. So we have two continued public hearings. We'll start with case 2483M23, a request by the Urbana zoning administrator on behalf of the Urbana City Council to rezone 205 North High Cross Road from B3 general business to B1 neighborhood business. We have a presentation?
We do, once I get situated here.
Okay, sure.
Okay. So, at the direction of City Council, this is a request by me, the Urbana zoning administrator, to consider rezoning 205 North High Cross Road from B3 general business to B1 neighborhood business. This property is owned by OSF Healthcare. When this parcel was annexed in 1991, the Behringer Commons subdivision identified the corner of University Avenue and High Cross Road as a future commercial area. Aldi later purchased the entire commercial lot. And in 2004, they subdivided it into two lots, one for the Aldi grocery store, which you can see here, and then the second one, which was vacant, to be sold later for future business. In 2020, the property was rezoned to B3 general business. And I've included the 2020 staff report in your packet as Exhibit F, if you'd like to refer to that. And at that time, OSF Healthcare planned to use the site for a convenient care clinic. And so at that time, they applied for both a rezoning and a special use permit to allow a medical clinic in the B3 district. And both requests were granted. At the Plan Commission hearing in 2020, the Commission discussed how a rezoning would allow any of the uses that are permitted in the B3 district and that the rezoning would not limit the use on the site to the medical clinic that the special use permit that was being sought at the time would also allow. The Plan Commission then voted unanimously to recommend to the council that the property be rezoned to B3. Council then voted six to one in favor of the rezoning. And the property was rezoned to B3. Minutes from both the Plan Commission and the council meeting are in your packets. Okay. That medical clinic was never built. And then in late 2023, the zoning board granted a conditional use permit to allow a self-storage facility on the site. That conditional use permit is still valid regardless of whether the property is rezoned. However, if the property is rezoned to B1, that conditional use permit, while valid, would result in a legally non-conforming use on the site since the self-storage would no longer be allowed in the B1 district. In November 2023, the City Council passed a resolution, which is also in your packet, that directed the zoning administrator to file a rezoning application for the property to consider rezoning it back to B1. I want to be clear about council's directive in this case. So I'm just going to read directly from the resolution that they passed, Resolution 2023-11-094R. And if you're following law at home, the fourth whereas there says, "The City Council of the City of Urbana now wishes to reconsider whether the B3 zoning district is the appropriate designation for this parcel, given the full complement of uses possible in that zone, whether by right, special use permit or a conditional use permit." So I just want to be clear. Council did not say, "We want this property to be rezoned." They said, "We want you to reconsider the rezoning." Okay. So, the site, as you can see on the map here, is approximately 2.2 acres. It's just north of University Avenue on High Cross Road. It's currently vacant. The current land uses, you'll see to the north and west, you have residential uses in Behringer Commons. To the south, you have the Aldi grocery store. And then to the east, you have some farmland and some residential that's out in the county. The zoning of the site, obviously the site is zone B3. You've got the B1 neighborhood business to the south. You've got R4 medium-density multiple-family residential to the north and to the west. And to the east, it's not on here, but it's county ag and residential. And then finally, for future land uses, this area is identified, along with the area across the street, as community business in the future. And then it's bordered by residential to the west and northeast. Okay, so this property has been vacant since before it was annexed into Urbana in 1991. So for most of its history in Urbana up until 2020, so 29 years or so, it was zoned B1. And then again, in 2020, it was rezoned to B3. And there are plans to develop a self-storage facility on the site. Let's see. So while some of the rezoning criteria are met, and I'll get into that in a minute, several of the criteria weigh against the rezoning. And the most compelling of these criteria deal with the vacancy of the land. As I said, the parcel, for almost 30 years, was zoned B1, and it was vacant. Only after it was rezoned to B3 has there been potential development proposed for the site. So to revert the site back to B1 would revert it to a zone that has historically not attracted development to this location. Also, the Plan Commission, as I stated earlier, recommended unanimously, and the City Council approved, the rezoning of the parcel back in 2020 to B3 after discussing that the rezoning would allow any of the uses allowed in the B3 district and would not limit the site to the special use permit for a medical clinic that was also under consideration at the time. And then finally, there have been no changes to the land or the surrounding area since 2020. That would suggest that rezoning back to B1 is compelling at this time. So I'll quickly run through the rezoning criteria because that's what the Plan Commission needs to focus on when making their decision. Number one is the existing land uses and zoning of the nearby property. So rezoning to B1 neighborhood business is compatible with the land uses in the immediate area. There are grocery stores, a post office, and residential uses in the surrounding area. And then all the surrounding residences in Behringer Commons are separated either by a road or a six-foot wall, sorry. All of the surrounding residences, including Behringer Commons and then the residences across the street, are separated either by a road or a six-foot wall from the site. So that would minimize any negative impacts of a business use there. And so the rezoning is therefore appropriate for the area. However, the current zoning, B3, is also appropriate and compatible with the land uses and zoning of the surrounding area for the same reasons that B1 meet this criteria. And as stated in the findings in ordinance 2020-04-023, which originally rezoned the site to B3. So this criteria weighs either neutrally or against the proposed rezoning. The second criteria really is not applicable in this case, so I won't go through it. The third is the extent to which the ordinance promotes the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the public. Rezoning to B1 would be compatible with the future land use designation of the comprehensive plan, which is designed to promote health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the public. So this weighs in favor of the rezoning. Number four is the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship of the individual property owner. So rezoning the property to B1 would revert it to a zoning designation that it had for almost 30 years, and the property sat vacant that entire time. It's not really in the public's interest to have land sit vacant, especially for a long time. And furthermore, the property owner would see a significant decrease in permitted uses if the property is rezoned to B1, which could be considered a hardship imposed on the owner. So this weighs against the proposed rezoning. Number five is the suitability of the subject property for the zone purposes. This property is zoned, or sorry, is suited for neighborhood business uses. And again, is identified as community business in the comprehensive plan. So this weighs in favor of the proposed rezoning. Number six is the length of time the property has been vacant as zoned. This property has been vacant, again, since before it came into the city back in 1991. And since 2020, when the property was rezoned to B3, we've seen two development proposals for the site, the medical clinic, which obviously wasn't built, but then now the self-storage facility, which has been improved by the zoning board. And in the prior 29 years that it was in the city's own B1, we had no proposals, that I'm aware of, to redevelop the site or to develop the site. So to return it to the previous designation of B1 would be to return it to the zone where it's at vacant for decades. So this weighs against the proposed rezoning. Number seven is the community's need for more of the proposed use. The community may benefit from having more land designated for neighborhood business uses. So this weighs in favor of the proposed rezoning. And then finally, number eight is the care with which the, sorry, the care, I think I said carrot, the care with which the community has planned its land use development. So again, the 2005 comprehensive plan identifies the property as part of the community business, future land use. The current B3 and proposed B1 zoning are both consistent with this designation. So it weighs in favor of rezoning it since B1 is compatible. So overall, some of the criteria weigh in favor of the rezoning, several of them weigh against it or are neutral. And as I stated sort of earlier, is that the most compelling criteria are really number four, which deals with the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the owner. And then number six, which deals with how long the property has been vacant. So, and both of those criteria weigh against rezoning, the parcel back to B1. That concludes my report. There are a couple of options that the Plan Commission has in this case. You can forward it to City Council with a recommendation to approve the rezoning. You can forward it to City Council with a recommendation to deny the rezoning. And staff recommend that the Commission carefully consider the rezoning criteria that I just went through and then determine whether to recommend approval or denial to City Council. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any questions for staff? Mr. Hopkins?
The conditional use yields a conditional use permit. What were the conditions, if any, in that conditional use permit?
Well, I'm not sure that that's relevant to the criteria at hand, but, and I don't actually have those off the top of my head. I believe it was that it adhere to the site plan. I know that, you know, that's a standard condition that we have. There were, I might not get them all, but I think there is a condition, since it's already got a wall on two sides, there is a condition that it be fenced around the southern and eastern part, which doesn't have a fence. There was a condition on hours of operation, which I believe ended up matching Aldi, Aldi's hours of operation, so it would be until 8:00 PM. I can't remember how early it was, maybe seven in the morning or eight. And there was some security requirements, I believe. But again, I don't have those off the top of my head.
Not on lighting?
So there was nothing on lighting in the staff report, which was prepared by Nick Olson. It got into a couple, there were a couple of things that people wanted to hear about. And our zoning ordinance is pretty robust when it comes to lighting regulations. So just simply meeting the regulations of the zoning ordinance is going to prevent light trespass into the residential area.
So it's not the time for comment, but I think the conditions are relevant because it's relevant to think how the current zoning category works or doesn't work for this particular use. That's why I want to know, because I didn't, I mean, that information wasn't provided.
Well, I mean, the use has already been permitted, so that's,
No, I understand.
Okay.
But in what we are doing, we would change the possibility of a conditional use. And so understanding how the conditional use worked in this case, or from some people's perspective perhaps, didn't work, I think is relevant to the decision about whether to change it.
Okay.
Now, to make sure I understand a couple of things, which I think you've already addressed. Either of the cases tonight would result in a non-conforming use but would have no effect on the conditional use permit that currently exists for this project.
That's correct. Conditional use permits are valid for a year from the date they're granted. So I believe they've still got at least eight or nine months to act on that permit.
Now, either of these cases would make it a non-conforming use.
Yes.
Somewhere, it says a non-conforming use can go forever. But I'm trying to understand X7B in the zoning ordinance, which I read to say that there's a 40-year limit on a non-conforming building use? And maybe I'm not reading that correctly, but...
Yeah, maybe. Can you repeat what section that is?
107B.
I'll just read this so that everybody in the audience at home knows who we're talking about in case they don't have their printed copy of the zoning ordinance in front of them. So 107B of the zoning ordinance states that, "If a main building, other than a dwelling, is hereafter occupied by a lawful conforming use and such use thereafter becomes non-conforming, then such use shall be terminated within 40 years after the date of the completion of the building or the date of the completion of the last substantial enlargement, conversion, or structural alteration of the building or within 30 years after the use becomes non-conforming, whichever is later." So let me think about that for a second.
Took me a while to think, which is why I'm asking if anybody else has thought about it and has an interpretation different from mine.
Okay, can you all hear that? Okay. That's kind of tricky because it says something about it being a, yes, a lawful conforming use. It hasn't been built yet. If this, if either of these changes tonight went through, somebody would be building something that, when it's built, is already non-conforming. So I don't know that it would be a lawful conforming use at the time it's built. It becomes non-conforming, yeah. I don't know. This section of the ordinance is admittedly sometimes tricky to deal with. So I'm not sure. So I guess we could throw in the caveat that potentially the use would be, would have to be terminated after 40 years? Well, it said whichever is longer, right? Whichever is later. Does this work? Okay, that's working again.
It's pretty ambiguous in that paragraph, what happens. Okay, so that's, another one of these questions. Now, let's see. There is also a deed restriction on this property.
There, OSF has said that there's a deed restriction. I've not been provided with a deed restriction.
Well, we were provided with this list of prevented uses by one of the commentators in our commentary. And the deed restriction is claimed to have been recorded.
I searched for it through our software to get recorded documents. I did not find it. I found a recorded document that referenced another document, but there was no, I could not find the recorded document.
Well, let me follow up anyway. A deed restriction of this kind, which I believe is negotiated between Aldi and OSF at the time of that transaction, goes with the land. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, who can enforce that? That is, does the city take responsibility? Do the parties to the agreement have to enforce and undertake the cost of enforcement?
And Dustin seems to have an answer.
Well, I could give you the textbook answer, but I would defer to the attorney. It would be my understanding that it's the parties to the agreement that can enforce that.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, the city would only be involved if it ends up involving city-owned property. These are just two neighboring parcels that decided to say, "This is what we like or don't like about a neighboring one." I can certainly understand. And again, I don't have the list in front of me, but as I recall some conversations about this, Aldi said, "You're not going to have a grocery store on this lot." Well, certainly, that makes sense because Aldi doesn't want a competitor right next to it. But as far as enforcing that, it's going to be Aldi enforcing what they asked the neighboring property owner to put in place on their property.
Or OSF.
Yeah, OSF.
Because they claim to...
OSF has taken subject, I think, to those restrictions. So ultimately, to me, it would end up being Aldi saying, "You're not putting something on there that was part of this deed restriction."
OSF has some things in there that I'm pretty sure they would enforce if they had the opportunity. Now, who can alter this?
Who can alter what?
The deed restriction. Well, I'm pretty confident there is one.
Again, the owners of those parcels, if they want to go back and amend the deed restrictions, I think that's on them.
But it's on the original parties of the deed restriction, not the current owners of the land. Am I correct?
The deed restrictions go with the land. So whoever owns the land is taking subject to what those restrictions are. As the current owner, they could actually address those. But again, that's between the parcel owners for whatever may happen in the future, I guess. But I'm not sure I understand what you're asking about as far as city involvement for these things. We have none.
Okay. A reason I think this is relevant is those deed restrictions are potentially balancing or contradictory to either of the parties. On the one hand, they make some of the restrictions that people are asking for to go from B3 to B1. On the other hand, they make some restrictions that actually restrict the developability of the property to uses that the city might wish to have in order for the gains that are being talked about to have B3, because it restricts uses that are permitted by B3, not all of which we wouldn't necessarily want. So, but I think it's important for us to know whether the only parties that could change that deed restriction are the original two parties who filed it, who recorded it, or whether a new owner... I mean, it makes no sense to me. If a new owner can disobey the deed restriction, then it doesn't go with the land. Or am I missing something here?
I think I understand what you're saying. But if the deed restriction goes with the land, then it would seem to me that the new owners, who are subject to that deed restriction, would then be able to renegotiate with Aldi.
Yeah, that's what I said, right.
And OSF. If both are parties to that deed restriction.
Not necessarily. If OSF has sold the property to the point where they no longer own it, they're not an owner of interest to take anybody to task on the deed restrictions. It's the current owner. When they buy it, they're going to end up, when they do title work, and I know Kevin said he couldn't find it, they're going to do title work. And if the title work shows those restrictions, that person who's buying it now knows what they are. And if they want to change them in order to complete the transaction, then it's going to be them that's going to argue the point over the idea of what's happening, right? And they'll either buy it or not buy it.
Now, if Aldi also sold its property, then the deed restriction would go away?
No, deed restriction is recorded on, and it goes with the property. So, you know, if Aldi sells that and some other grocery store comes into place, then they take the, they stand in the shoes of Aldi in terms of what those deed restrictions are as compared to what, you know, it really affects this parcel in question. It's not only that it necessarily affects the Aldi parcel itself. The only impact is on the parcel we're talking about tonight.
Okay. I know...
Mr. Rose?
Criterion number seven. I don't have it in front of me, but I... I'm sorry. Criterion number seven, I took down from your presentation. It began with the terms, I believe, "community need." I wonder if you could help us to understand how the term "community" is typically understood, whether it is local, broad, or subject to interpretation?
Sure, yeah. I would consider it to mean the whole of the city of Urbana. Because typically, if there's a criteria that's more local, it's going to say neighborhood. Or some of our criteria refer to a district, which is usually about the zoning district itself.
Other questions? I'll ask a question then. On the same topic of the criteria, so the criteria that we're meant to use to evaluate the appropriateness of the rezoning come from these, a couple of cases, right?
Correct.
Can you explain for the commission, but also for the public, exactly how we're meant to use that criteria? Because from what I understand, it's not the case that, say, every factor needs to be met for something to be rezoned, that it's more of a, like a balancing test where we're weighing criteria against each other?
Right.
And not all of the criteria... Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Correct, yeah.
You can provide some bit of an explanation for that.
Yeah, and I... Yeah, and I, I like that you already brought up the term sort of balancing, or it's, it's like a balancing act. So, I mean, if you, if you had, say, one criteria that weighed overwhelmingly against something, that could be one criteria that, that you use to justify your, your decision. In, in some cases we have, you have to meet all of the criteria. Rezoning cases are, are not those. So you're really supposed to look at all of the criteria and then weigh them against each other, and then make your decision based on that.
Okay. And can I ask, so you, when you brought up criteria two, you said it wasn't relevant and didn't discuss it. In the staff memo, the interpretation is different than the interpretation that I would reach. It seems to suggest that this criteria is meant to evaluate the effect on surrounding parcels, whereas I would interpret this to mean the effect of the rezoning on the property value of the subject parcel. As in, does the rezoning or not rezoning the parcel have an impact on the property value?
Right. You may be correct in that. I, I don't think the criteria is, it, it's not terribly specific. So I think that would be a valid interpretation, is to focus on the subject property.
Okay. Miss you.
So I want to make sure I understand the situation. The zoning board of appeal approved a conditional use permit for this site to be zoned, to be, to allow self-storage use. And self-storage use at this moment in our zoning tax says it is allowed in B3 with a conditional use permit. So I have a question with regard to this, both cases, that if we believe a self-storage unit shouldn't be in B3, why we didn't just propose that one solution to the board to consider, remove that, why do we want to bring both cases here? Because it feels counterintuitive to me that if what we don't want in that piece of land is self-storage unit, but we do want, if there are appropriate use that can benefit the community that B1 does not provide, but B3 will provide, why do we bring that rezoning case in to kill that probability? Why do both? Why not approach it one at a time?
Well, the reason this rezoning case was brought forward is that council passed a resolution directing us to reconsider the rezoning for this parcel. So that, that's the reason that we're discussing it here.
Okay. So, but like, let's think from a rational zoning administrator's perspective, you don't have to do both to prevent the self-storage use. I just want to confirm that. One would be enough. The tax amendment will be enough to achieve that goal.
I, I understand what you're saying. One of my duties as the zoning administrator is to do all of the duties that are assigned me by the, by the zoning ordinance, and one of those says that if council or even plan commission directs me to, to rezone a parcel, then I bring it forward.
Yeah, now I understand, and I, I think I see where you are from. You brought forward both cases. It's because the first rezoning case is directly asked of you from city council.
That's correct.
But was, when city council passed that resolution, did they know that eliminating self-storage from B3 is another option? Would they present it with that option as well?
Not at the time, no.
Okay. I think that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple more questions.
I've had it.
So, future land use question. So, the two, two of the future land use areas that are sort of relevant categories in the, that are relevant in the area are the community business, and then there's also an area of regional business. These, just to be clear, these don't map necessarily one-to-one onto particular current zoning categories, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, just to be clear, both the streets at the intersection here are classified as major arterials in the mobility map for the city?
I, I believe so.
University and High Cross Road?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? No? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Okay, so I'll briefly go over the rules for a public hearing. We won't have the petitioner address a skin since the petitioner is staff in this case, but anyone in favor will be allowed to address the commission, followed by anyone opposed. Then at the end, if needed, Mr. Garcia or staff will have a chance to respond to any of the comments that have been made. Then we'll close the public input portion, discuss, and possibly vote. So I'll ask anyone in the audience that wishes to provide comment to please approach the mic, sign in, state your name, and we'll start with those that are in favor of the rezoning.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. My name is Joanne Buddy. I'm a resident of Berenger Commons. You've gotten a lot of emails from me, and so a lot of my arguments have already been made, but I just want to support one more time and urge you to support the rezoning of this lot. There is a restriction in an easement agreement on the property. I was able to find it at the recorder's office, but Aldi's and OSF can change it with mutual agreements, so it's not like it's going to be etched in stone. And I agree with the city attorney that whoever buys it from OSF will be bound, you know, so they'll, they'll be the people that can negotiate with Aldi's to, to make a new agreement. So who knows what it might happen in the future. That, that restriction in easement agreement does prevent such types of businesses as adult entertainment, tavern, mobile home park, but it does not prevent such businesses as car wash, fast food restaurant, gas station, mobile home sales, truck stop, truck repair, storage garage, and there's no height restriction in a B3 district. So, you know, we could be looking at a four-story building someday, or even a four-story self-storage. And you'd, even though you voted unanimously four years ago to change that zoning on that lot, if you read the minutes, you all had concerns about, oh, now if we change it, what's going to happen? What's going to happen in the future? Those zoning changes will stick, and, and is that really going to be appropriate for somebody, something close to a residential neighborhood? So here we are. You know, you, you had reservations then, and here we are faced with zoning district or a zoning designation that has no height restrictions, limited restrictions on the number of businesses inappropriate next to a residential neighborhood. Also, in one of my email novels to you, I explained that on the summary that the zoning administrator presented to you, he miscounted. He said that there were three in favor. There were actually four in favor of the rezoning, and a couple that he said were neutral or against really were neutral. So I just want you to double-check and look at how he, the weight value as you're trying to balance this. One of the comments is, would it cause a hardship to the owner if it's rezoned? They, the land won't have as much value. That's speculative at this point. And the owner right now is OSF with assets of $2 billion, and so it's not like some local small developer that, gee, if the value goes from $300,000 to $250,000, it's going to be a big loss for some local businessman. It's not going to be a big hardship for OSF. And first, they bought it for $300,000 from Aldi's, and they're trying to sell it for $400,000 four years later, so that might be why it hasn't sold. Another reason why it has sat vacant, at least for the last four years, is there's no for-sale sign on the property, never has been. Commercial developers driving by that lot might think it's owned by Aldi's, might think it's owned by Berenger Commons. I mean, the first thing, if you want to keep something from being vacant, is to put a for-sale sign on it. And the city's comprehensive plan for future land use shows that the area across the street is, that's currently farmland, will be residential, and it might be fairly hard to sell homes right across from a industrial type of business that would be allowed in a B3. The other things as part of the comprehensive plan that would support changing it back to a B1 would be, the comprehensive plan says that we should ensure appropriate zoning in established neighborhoods to help foster the overall goals for each unique area, and ensure that the site design for new development in established neighborhoods is compatible with the built fabric of that neighborhood, and promote development that residents and visitors recognize as being of high quality and aesthetically pleasing. If you leave it as a B3, a lot of business could go in there that would not be aesthetically pleasing. OSF, in one of their letters, argued that the doctrine of latches should apply because they bought the land knowing that it was zone B3. Well, this is kind of a chicken and egg thing. Like, they say they wouldn't have bought the land if it didn't get rezoned. You wouldn't have rezoned it if OSF hadn't asked you to rezon it so they could build a medical clinic. So anyways, and there's another, a number of court cases that say, you, as a property owner, you can't expect the zoning ordinance to stay in place forever. So the doctrine of latches that OSF at one time argued, but they're not here, argued that they should have some assurance that the zoning would stay in place. There's been a lot of talk about increased revenue to the city if we leave it as a B3. Nobody's wanted to comment about how much revenue that would generate for the city. Self-storage units do not charge sales tax, so, and that's a big source of revenue for the city, so a self-storage is not going to generate that kind of income for the city. And even if something goes in that generates revenue, you can bet there's going to be a number of homeowners that are going to be applying to the county to have their taxes reduced because their property values have gone down. And I think when they, when that part of the LaSalle case talks about property values, it's not just the value of that lot, it's the values of, of the area around it. And maybe that's all I have to say, but I, it's just, a B3 allows so many types of businesses that would be inappropriate that close to a residential neighborhood that I really urge you to, to do what, you know, we, to correct a mistake that was made. It was, you know, you did the right thing in February, or back in 2008, or, I'm sorry, 2020, but you did that for a specific purpose, and you had concerns then that we might be finding ourselves where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does anyone else wish to address the commission?
Now, okay. My name is Nancy Berenberg, and I live in Berenger Commons. And I would simply like to point out that six-foot wall is not high enough to even hide the proposed self-storage units. That people who live in, along Rutherford will be looking directly at whatever goes in there. And so I really urge you to think very seriously about going back to a B1, because we really, we have a wonderful neighborhood that we take great pride in. It's a multi-ethnic neighborhood, and, and please let us keep our good neighborhood with good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Vicky Trimble. I also live in Berenger Commons. I sent you folks a letter, an email, as directed, which we've been doing this since last October, so multiple emails have gone, but I did discover at the February 8 meeting when we were here, and OSF asked for an extension, that my letter hadn't even made the packet. And then we found out several other people's letters had not made the packet, their emails. So that was corrected for the February 22. But I know a lot of time has passed, and you're busy people, and even if you had a chance to read them, you may have forgotten. So I really would encourage you, before making any votes, to take some time this evening and just sit there and reread through these things, because I feel like by some of the questions and some of the things that are asked, like, maybe you didn't remember or get a chance to read these things. I mean, it's public record. You can go any, online and check. I pay $15,000 a year in taxes for my home. I'm the sole owner. I moved there because of safety, because it's beautiful, because the neighbors are amazing, because we had Aldi's close by. There's a post office right there. It's just a lovely place to be and live. And I didn't do that to, and it's stated in my email, to have something, you know, like an auction house, or a dispensary, or a mortuary, or a gaming hall, or a liquor store. I mean, those are not the kinds of things we want to have built there, and I just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to go back and review everything before making any big decisions, because, I mean, we've just been dealing with this now for so long, and we feel like we've gone uphill battle, and we've tried to do everything that we have been asked to do, to submit, to come, to speak. We've lost a lot of people over the winter because we got snowbirds. They're in Florida, they're in Arizona, and we're fighting for their homes too, because they can't be here to represent themselves, but they did send emails, and, and they've tried. But if you don't get those things, or you get them late and you don't have a chance to read them, or you don't remember because they weren't in the packet, and then you get them on some Thursday morning, days later, I mean, that's the frustrating thing to us. It's just, we want to make sure you're really informed, you really understand what this means to the neighborhood. And Joanne said so many things already. I'm not going to repeat everything she said, but as far as I know, everybody back here, I know with the exception of one person, I'm not sure who that is. Otherwise, we're all neighbors here, and we're just trying to represent our community the best we can, and keep it a beautiful community without some sort of eyesore that we really don't want sitting on that corner. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks for your comment. Is anyone else in favor of the rezoning that wishes to address the commission? If not, we'll move on to those who are opposed. Are there anyone in the audience opposed to the rezoning that wishes to address the commission?
Hi, my name is David Huber. I'm a resident of Urbana. I, I find this quite ridiculous, to be frank, this exercise. I spoke to the, at the city council a few weeks ago, expressing that feeling I have about what really is a misappropriation of very scarce city resources, to go round and round with this matter. I guess some people would like to think this is a great exercise of democracy, and, you know, look, we're, but I work with the city planning department, other departments of the staff. I see how under-resourced it is. I meet with Kevin, I meet with city planners, and we're always told what can't be done because of scarce resources, a serious overhaul of our planning ordinance, zoning ordinance, which has a lot of weird ambiguities and probably doesn't meet their desires, mine, et cetera. So there's not that kind of reform that's necessary that's going to influence or affect the city broadly. Instead, we just go round and round, and we fall into this Urbana thing of, of just choosing these battles to fight and just misappropriate our future, really. It's the future. Anyways... Anyways, I don't know anyone in Berenger Commons. I do not know the person who's attempting to build, sell storage. But I do own B3 properties, so maybe that is my interestedness in addition to just being a citizen of Urbana. I'm not a zoning expert, but it seems to me that this effectively would, and I know whatever, the LaSalle doesn't, like, individual cases, I guess, don't set precedent within the city for other things, but it essentially is communicating that rezoning is conditional, right? Like, we'll rezone, sure, but when something comes up that we don't like, we're going to take the zoning back and downzone it. There's other people who are more expert, but that is my sense of things. So it just has a destabilizing effect, this whole thing. And again, and Mr. Hopkins, you said at the 2020 meeting, when this rezoning was approved, you reminded the plan commission that the rezoning will survive the special use permit, whether the special use permit is acted on or not. End of story. I mean, not end of story, sure, we can go do this, but it was not like, like we didn't know that this could happen. In any case, it is also important to, like, in addition, regardless of the deed restriction, there are aspects of the zoning ordinance that restrict use adult entertainment and cannabis, maybe others, but those I know, within a certain number, 100 or 200 feet of the R districts. So regardless of the deed restriction, you can't have the adult entertainment, you can't have the cannabis that is the boogeyman. And sure, those could be amended down the road, et cetera, but in any case, my last point is that, along the lines of this is just such a misappropriation of energy, time, money, and thinking about the future, instead of going round and round about something, a part of town that just seems to be relitigated all the time, all the time, all the time. There's more we can do as residents, and I guess this is for the people behind me, which is like, we're just over-prioritizing zoning when really we need to take action as citizens, as business owners. People in this room can speak for me because I come to the city and I say, hey, we want to get a business onto this parcel that's vacant near my home. Like, what can we do? Can we try, you know, take action, stop being passive, and then coming to the city and saying, can you change the law to make this thing we don't want not happen? Well, the property was vacant, and if, I mean, they have very specific individual desires, and actually, I think they're very powerful as a community because they have HOAs, meaning they can really form a community and have access to one another. So why can't they get together and make something positive for this property that has been vacant for so long, instead of now coming when it's terrible? I don't mean to be so critical of them, I just think, I'm on TV, so I'm saying that to the whole city and anyone watching, which is, take ownership of your city and try to make the change you want, rather than come and just gum up the system when it's not something you don't like. And all of the due diligence and all of the zoning has occurred, and a lot of time has been spent by the city over the years. So I am emphatically against this, and I would, I would like to see it rejected with commentary sent back to the city council to say, no, and please don't do this. Send us back these things that we've approved, because they are happy to reject the things that you approve. Not saying this is like a fight, but they're not, like, you are representatives and, I believe, have to live in the city, so you are, you know, you're here for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that's opposed that wishes to address the commission? If not, I'll give an opportunity for staff to address any of the comments that we've heard.
Before we do that, OSF did ask that their February 22 letter be read into the record, so I'm going to do that here. So this is from OSF Healthcare. It says, "To the city and citizens of Urbana, OSF Healthcare prides itself on being good neighbors in the communities we serve. Our intent from day one was to develop the lot at 205 North High Cross into something that would be viewed as positive for the neighborhood and community. Unfortunately, with the recent change in healthcare, we are not able to develop and open a medical office building on location. After OSF became aware of the public hearing on the city's application for the proposed rezoning of the property, Plan Case Number 2483-M-23, on February 8, 2024, OSF's council had submitted public comments expressing OSF's concerns about the potential rezone. Since then, OSF has reviewed concerns and comments from neighboring property owners who are proponents of the rezone. In light of that, OSF has no additional comments to make, other than the request that the location remain B3 as it is today. We are grateful for your understanding and appreciate your consideration."
Okay, thanks for reading that in. Does staff want to address any of the comments that we've heard?
I think there is just, just one clarification that I made, or that I would like to make. So, and it's a little bit confusing. So the public input that was handed out earlier included three letters, including that OSF letter that I just read, three letters that were actually submitted prior to last meeting but weren't able to make it into the packet for Plan Commission. So we had handed those out to the Plan Commission last time, but those hadn't been made available to the public until now. So when I was summing up the comments that we had received after last meeting, I was only including the letter from Charles Warmbrun, the email from Joanne Buddy on 229, and the email from Jim and Marla Tucker on 31. I did not include in my summary the OSF letter or the two emails from Esther Pat, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so we'll declare the public input portion closed, and now go into discussion amongst the commission and possibly entertain motions to vote. Is there any discussion of the proposal before we make a motion?
I just really want to say that, is there a better way for us to do this? Back in 2020, we really, at least me, I remember, I really want to encourage that land to be developed, and a physician's office sounds really good, and I wholeheartedly believe that plan will carry out. And then pandemic hit, things changed. So unfortunately, a lot of consequences we were afraid of become the issue today. So as Plan Commissioner, as planners here, do we have a better way to address this kind of issue in the future? We really wish we could. As a discussion, not really asking anyone, just a sentiment that I feel. It's, I don't think we made a wrong decision back then, it was just the tools we have are not able to support us to precisely do something that would be good for the community.
Mr. Hopkins?
Well, I agree, and this goes back to the problem that we have to fly the airplane at the same time that we are completely reconstructing every part of it. And as pointed out, that takes more capacity than we have. We know we need to revise the zoning ordinance in pretty drastic ways. We have ideas about how to do that. But I think we still have to figure out how to fly the plane in the moment. So it's a bit tricky, in my view, to deal with the current situation. I infer from OSF's letter and non-presence that they have chosen not to actively present their legal arguments. I think to some extent, part of their legal argument of reduced possibilities and potential gain from B3 is internally contradicted by their own restrictions on B3 uses, and not just the ones that may actually be impossible because of distance constraints or whatever, not just adult entertainment, and maybe liquor store, I'm not sure. So I see that in part as their own acknowledgement that B3 is the wrong zoning, and sort of an acknowledgement after the fact that they got what they got. I don't know how to put it exactly, but with an incomplete argument on their part. So I think one thing to understand is, directly, we cannot change by the actions available to the commission, the fact that a conditional use permit exists for this property. That still exists, and this body can't do anything about that. It's still tactically relevant that if it becomes a non-conforming use, for either reason, that is, as I think Ms. Yu pointed out, either one of these things would make it a non-conforming use, either this case or the next case. But then the question is, if we don't want to come back to this, if we just do the second, we still have B3 zoning on this for some other uses that we don't want. B1 maybe, and the height limit, which we, I think, probably commented on in 2020 as well. If we didn't in this case, we have in other cases. So I guess where I'm at is balancing the middle. I think we have more opportunity than we might, under other circumstances, to rezone this without risk, without legal risk. To achieve the tactic of having it become non-conforming, the second case is probably a less risky strategy. And we need to revise the zoning ordinance. So anyway, that's sort of where I am. I don't know where anybody else is.
Ms. Yu, or Ms. Dennis?
So this is more of a technical question. So as I read the restrictive deed, it seems like it excludes most of the things that the B3 expansion would allow, minus the height, it has a lot of, has so many restrictions already in the agreement. I guess I'm struggling to figure out, I mean, and if the agreement follows the property, and it already prohibits almost, you know, I mean, like, it almost prohibits so many things that I think people would consider to be not good proper use. There's, it seems to build in some protections. I guess I'm just trying to weigh, like, why, because you've made the change and I wasn't, you know, here on 2020, you've made the change. It just seems like, given the deed, I guess I'm struggling to understand, like, what would be allowable under B3? What, I mean, yeah, so with the deed, like, the current structure of it, what would be worries that could happen beyond sort of the storage unit? Do you know what I mean? Because there are so many restrictions built into the covenant, you know, the covenant that follows it. As I read it, like, you can't have a chain, you can't have, like, it's pretty...
Let me go to Ms. Yu first, because she had...
So I want to address what Ms. Hopkins said about the least risky option is just do number two. But I also really want to say that, back in 2020, we really did the rezoning because we very much want OSF, we want to support them, but the thing we want to support did not happen. So I don't see a reason to change it, a reason not to change it back to B1, even though it's probably not setting, we don't want to do that for all the cases, but for this case, I feel, it just feels, from the land use, it's a community use, it's definitely different from the Walmart lot as a B3, as a regional use. It just feels that one should be B1. We give it B3 because we really, really want to encourage OSF to do what they want to do. That's where I'm sitting on.
So addressing the question of the deed restriction, I think there are a couple of reasons not to rely on it. One, in effect, it is putting under private control the control of land use. And it doesn't restrict all of the things that would be restricted by B1. And it also restricts some things that, for some people, might not appropriately be restricted by private use of land regulation. And since the public does not have control over it, OSF could go back to Aldi and renegotiate, and Aldi will keep in that it doesn't want a competing supermarket. But Aldi might well be willing to take out the restrictions and a whole lot of other things. And so I'm reluctant, and this is why I was trying to get clear in my own head exactly how this would work. I don't like the idea of delegating or relying on independently operating private parties to accomplish the city's land use regulatory goals.
We're kind of starting to articulate reasons behind We're kind of starting to articulate reasons behind a possible motion. So I just want to take a second and remind everyone of something that's kind of unique about this case in that we don't have a recommendation to, we don't have a recommendation from staff in the staff report whether or not to recommend approval or recommend denial. In our bylaws, we typically adopt a reason or a justification for our action that is based on what staff recommends in their staff memo. So in this case, it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we actually need to adopt findings that explain the reason for the motion that we are putting forward. That can be and should be in reference to the LaSalle and Sinclair criteria. So whoever makes the motion, I would ask that you be sure to reference the criteria in the staff memo that are offering support to what's being proposed. Did I get that correct, staff?
That is absolutely correct.
And I wasn't pressuring anyone to make a motion, just putting that out there because we're starting to hear some things that sound like reasons behind a certain motion, so. Are we ready to make a motion? Mr. Rose? Mike, microphone.
I'm reviewing the criteria right now. And I assign considerable importance to the comprehensive plan. That is, to the broader vision under which we're working. And I'm struggling now to see under which of these criteria that comes to the fore.
I think it's number eight.
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the change from B3 to B1 zoning. And I find that of all the criteria that we have to go on, the one that seems somewhat non-negotiable or less balanceable is the criterion that says we have guidance in front of us. And that guidance has this parcel as a B1 property.
Community business. As community business, it doesn't say it's as B1. Can you flip to that?
That's correct. And I believe there was a question earlier on whether the future land uses in the comprehensive plan directly tie to zoning districts, and they do not. This is identified as community business in the comprehensive plan, not neighborhood business, which is what the B1 zone is.
That's correct. But just to be clear, you can make the argument that B1 is an appropriate zoning for that future land use. Mr. Rose, did you want to add anything to that? So what I'm hearing is that you're proposing a motion to approve based on the strength of criteria number eight in particular. The criteria, as I understand them, that are in favor of the rezoning are also criteria number three, five, and seven. Is that correct?
Yes for seven, yes for five, and yes for three.
Right. Okay, so can we amend that motion to say based on the criteria in favor of the rezoning, which are criteria three, five, and seven, but with an emphasis on the strength of criteria number eight?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rose. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Yu. Is there any discussion on the motion? No discussion, okay. Seems like we're ready to vote. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. and Ms. Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
And Mr. Elred?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Do we have a date for council?
We do. It's, there's a little caveat as well. So the earliest this could go to council, or actually to committee of the whole, would be on March 18th. But it's my understanding that there will be a rescheduled city council meeting being held that day. So there is a strong possibility that that committee meeting will be rescheduled to that Wednesday, the 20th. So keep an eye out for those agendas and for notification of those meetings. I mean, that's the earliest it could go. There's no guarantee that it will go on one of those dates.
Okay, that brings us to our second continued hearing of the evening, which is case 2484 T24, a request by the Urbana zoning administrator to amend Table 5.1 of the zoning ordinance to remove self-storage facility from the B3 general business district as a conditional use. Do we have a presentation by staff?
We do. I will be significantly less long-winded on this one than the previous one, so I guess I'll be short-winded. Okay. This is a request by me, the zoning administrator, for a text amendment to remove self-storage facilities from the B3 general business zoning district. Self-storage facilities were initially added to the table of uses back in 1998. Before that, they were allowed as a byright use in the B3 district under a more general warehouse use. But in 1998, the city approved a text amendment to add warehouse, comma, self-storage facility as a distinct use to separate that from warehouse. And that text amendment also eliminated warehouses as a byright use in the B3 district and instead required a special use permit for self-storage facilities in B3. It also required conditional use for self-storage in industrial districts. Later, the zoning ordinance was amended to require a conditional use permit for self-storage in the B3 district and to allow them byright in industrial districts. So that's what our current table of uses says. So the intent of these earlier text amendments was first to establish self-storage facilities as a distinct use from warehouses, and then to require additional review for self-storage facilities in the B3 district, since B3 contains some of the best commercial land in Urbana, much of which would not be best used for self-storage. So the proposed text amendment would remove self-storage facilities as a conditional use in the B3 district altogether, so it would no longer be allowed in any capacity. And that would prevent areas that are intended to be developed with more active, tax-revenue generating businesses from being used for self-storage facilities. I will note that there are currently six self-storage facilities in the B3 district. There are also two approved self-storage facilities in B3 that have not yet been constructed. One, as you all know, at 205 North High Cross Road, the other at 1601 Colorado Avenue. Now, this text amendment would not prevent either of those permitted facilities from being built, but it would make them legally non-conforming uses, along with the other six that are already existing in Urbana. So as non-conforming uses, they could remain in operation indefinitely or possibly for 40 years. But they could not be expanded. And if they were abandoned for six or more months, they could not be reestablished. The proposed text amendment is very simple. It is removing the C in the table of uses under the B3 district where it intersects with self-storage facility. So it would be striking that C. There would no longer be a letter there, so self-storage would no longer be permitted in that district. Staff recommends that planned commission forward this case to the city council with a recommendation to approve the proposed text amendment. I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Any questions for staff? Ms. Hopkins?
I was trying to look on the zoning map quickly enough to maybe answer the question that you answered while I was looking. So how many, there are six currently in B3?
Yes.
There are two permitted but not built in B3?
Correct. Yes.
And are there, did you say two in industrial or?
No, I didn't actually state how many are in industrial. I think it's five, if I'm remembering correctly. And I may have just found one more recently. So it's either, there's either 11 or 12 total in the city. So the remainder are in industrial districts.
So there's the East University. Trying to think where else there is one that's not in B3.
Oh, I've got the map on my computer in my office, but I don't have it with me here.
But you're confident there are half a dozen existing that would not become non-conforming?
That's correct. That's correct. There are about half a dozen, five or six, existing in industrial districts that would become non-conforming.
Ms. Yu?
So I will ask, without the case on the High Cross Road, without this case being brought to your attention, ask you to do something, would you make this proposal? Is that part of your agenda from quite a while ago? Or it's something that is brought up because of this case?
Well, I mean, it's a combination of things. That was, that's one of the reasons. But we've also had quite a few conditional use permits for self-storage in the B3 district in the last few years, like along Philo Road especially. So it seemed like a good time to maybe pump the brakes on that.
So for those conditional use permit that was approved, because I wasn't on that board, I wasn't following it, what was the rationality of approving them? What criteria do they usually go with that? What public interest do they serve by allowing those conditional use in a B3?
Yeah, so I can grab the criteria from my zoning ordinance if you'd like. But there are three criteria. One of them is whether it's conducive to the public convenience. So is it convenient to the public? One of them is whether it will cause a nuisance to adjacent properties. And I should know this off the top of my head. But there's a third one. And they need to meet all three of the criteria. And in those, in every case for a conditional use permit, it's always taken on a case-by-case basis. So the zoning board weighs those criteria, they, you know, and then they use those to make their decision. I mean, the one on Colorado Avenue, it is in the B3 district, but it's sort of off of Philo Road, half a block. So it's kind of in this space that's probably not going to be developed into some really high-performing business use. So I think that factored into their decision-making.
Do we hear from a very, do we have, like, some public input on, like, negative feedbacks on self-storage? What is public's opinion on this? Is that part of the rationale makes you make this proposal? Aside from this one on High Cross?
I cannot speak for the public, but I can speak to my almost 10 years with the city. I don't recall any complaints about self-storage facilities coming in, you know, until the recent case. But that's, I mean, that's only, you know, my narrow experience as one person.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rose?
The, what we're looking at is removing C from the B1.
B3.
From B3, sorry. The, I'm struggling, I'm a newcomer to this commission, and I'm struggling with the relationship between this planned commission and the zoning board of appeals. These are very independent organizations.
Correct.
But there must be informing back and forth. And I'm, I may be, that may be happening through these formal means. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to see how providing conditional uses that would, in my view, sort of stretch our imagined use, set of uses for a particular zoning. It seems to stretch those. You know, and by providing apparently more conditional uses than falling into zones where conditional uses are not necessary, do we take a lesson from that? Or do they take a lesson from us? Sort of how I'm trying to weigh this.
Was there a question in there? I mean, I heard a question.
No, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry there was not. But by making uses conditional, do we, are we expected to learn that this is how uses within a zoning are stretched? Sorry, no question.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, sort of the purpose of conditional uses and special uses is to say, you know, we've got our allowed uses, which we think shouldn't essentially cause harm or a nuisance to neighbors. Conditional and special uses are, hey, these ones have potential to cause some harm, so let's add a little bit of review and then allow it where we can place conditions on them. So you can say, like, okay, you know, you need to build a fence that, you know, that's not see-through, or you need to install a bunch of landscaping so that, you know, or you need to do something to mitigate noise or things like that. So it's just kind of saying, these uses just require a little more thought before we can approve them. I don't know if that answers the non-question that was there.
Yes, that's it.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? I'll ask a question. So the staff report didn't note the locations of the existing self-storage units. And, you know, when you look at the B3 zoning outside of the residential uses, it's one of the largest zones that we have in the city. And it covers land that's in, you know, higher-trafficked corridors adjacent to residential uses, but it also covers land that is adjacent to industrial uses and is pushed further to the edge of town. Can you quickly summarize, like, where these are, the six, like, in a general way, maybe?
Yeah, let me, so in a general way, there are a few along Philo Road, sort of in the, you know, in the Philo Road business corridor. So, you know, south of Florida, well, mostly south of, well, there's one just north of Colorado. There's, there are a couple just south of there. So you've probably seen them, Urbana Self-Storage. It's in an old big-box store, possibly an old grocery store. And then the U-Haul, which is south of there. And there's actually one And there's actually one just north of U-Haul, which is kind of innocuous. You might never have even noticed the building. There are then several up along sort of Cunningham Avenue that are kind of tucked away on side streets, most of them. The most prominent one is self, it's, it's up by like, on the east side, sort of by like Hickory River, just north of Perkins Road. So that's probably the most prominent one. There's a couple that are just small that you would, you'd probably, you'd blink, you'd miss them.
And do you have any sense? I mean, I have no idea when these were developed, but were these businesses that went into parcels that had been vacant for some time? Or have they been there for decades? Any, any sense of, any insight you can share about that?
So the, the two big ones on Philo Road definitely went into old, sort of big, big-box stores. The big one up on Cunningham Avenue was, was purpose-built, but I don't know when it was built. And then sort of the smaller ones were just people building individual buildings or several small buildings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Sims?
I just have probably a small one. So if you remove B, remove storages from the B three zone, and there are places that have conditional use, I guess I'm trying to figure out then what then happens? Do they then have to come back? Do they, yeah, so?
No, they'll, they will be allowed to remain in perpetuity or 40 years.
Okay, I just wanted to say, because I don't remember.
Yeah, and then the other thing with non-conforming uses, there's a couple other things that I mentioned earlier. But one of them is you can't expand them. One of them, which I didn't mention earlier, is that if there's a big fire or a tornado that destroys more than, I think it's 50% of the market value of it, then you can't rebuild it. And then the third one, which I had a second ago, and then I thought about that and forgot it. The third one, oh, is if you abandon it. So if for some reason, which I don't see that happening with self-storage, but just in general, if you abandon any non-conforming use for six months or more, then you can't reestablish it.
And abandonment is physical, financial, commercial?
Yeah, I mean, it would just be if you, and self-storage is a really bad example for this because I don't know how you would abandon that unless you told everybody to take their stuff and stop paying you money. But like if you had, say, like downtown, we don't allow auto repair shops. So if you had an auto repair shop downtown and you closed it, and then you sold it seven months later to somebody who said, hey, I want to open an auto repair shop, we'd say, that's great, we have many other locations in town for you to choose from, but not there.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go over the review, the rules for a public hearing again. So anyone in favor will be allowed to address the commission. Anyone opposed will be allowed to address the commission. Then at the end, if needed, staff can address any of the comments that have been made. All right, so at this point, I'll open it up to the public again. If anyone would like to address the commission, come forward, state your name and sign in. We'll start with those that are in favor of the proposed change. Could you hand those to Terry over there? She doesn't have a nameplate, but she's Terry, I assure you.
So is my microphone on? Yes?
Yeah.
So my name is Jeff Bant. I've lived in Urbana since 75. I've lived on Pennsylvania Avenue near Lincoln Avenue for almost 40 years. I was a member of the first Urbana Arts Commission, and my wife Marilyn Yupa Bant served on the Urbana Plan Commission for a number of years. I have watched a lot of Plan Commission meetings. I want to make some comments on the uses and misuses of self-storage lockers. I currently rent a self-storage locker on Tatman Court near Walmart in Urbana and rented another for a long time at a facility on Glover Avenue in Urbana. I have firsthand knowledge of the uses and the misuses of self-storage. With sadness and frustration, I have watched the aspirations of the Philo Road redevelopment plan of 2005 be buried beneath a wall of self-storage lockers on the east side of Philo Road. The sculptures placed by the Arts Commission to help create a commercial and cultural oasis where the Urbana residential communities to the east and the west of Philo Road have long since gone. My comments tonight only concern the potential misuses of self-storage and highlight why I think self-storage service units should not be permitted near residential areas. Though there is no, as far as I can find, no independent comprehensive study of actual self-storage usage trends, the uses and misuses of self-storage lockers are myriad and well-documented in the media. First, there is an assumed, intended contractual or cliche use of, as a place to store extra stuff from your house or from your garage. This may be the most common use, but it is the potential and actual misuses that concerns me and I think should concern the Plan Commission. The misuses are many and are easily documented in newspapers, on TV news, and in online searches. There are many documented misuses that fall well outside those uses that are allowed by the rental contract. I have personally witnessed many of these non-contractual uses. Self-storage lockers are used as offices for businesses, contractors, and service companies, which store equipment, supplies, and chemicals for such things as lawn services, power washing, auto repair, painting, home repair, to mention only a few. They are used as workshops for car repair, welding, carpentry, and painting. In addition to storing supplies, units are used for the storage of a variety of products for sale, such as lawn care chemicals, art supplies, nutritional supplements, liquor, smoking materials, and foodstuffs. They are used as entertainment centers or what's commonly called man caves with TVs and barbecues and bars and liquor and drugs. I've been invited to some of them. They are used as studios for artists and as rehearsal practice spaces for bands and especially drummers. They are used for storing weapons and ammunition and are used as spaces in which to reload ammunition by filling empty shell casings with gunpowder that is stored in the rental unit. There are also many other well-documented, clearly criminal uses of self-storage units. Stolen goods and autos are housed in storage units. Missing persons in Illinois have been found dead in their spouses' self-storage units. Drug manufacture, storage and uses carried out in units, auto chop shops, prostitution, human trafficking, terrorism, all find self-storage very economical, usable, and secure and safe. But the most alarming and increasingly pervasive misuse of self-storage is its use as living space. Individuals and families are living in self-storage lockers across the country and in Urbana and Champaign. These spaces provide a low-cost alternative to high-priced homes and high apartment rental fees and provide an alternative to living in a car or on the street. Storage units can be outfitted with TVs, beds, heaters, air conditioners, portable toilets, showers, and kitchens. The internet is rife with examples of how to equip a storage locker for low-cost living, but it is also full of posts on methods to avoid detection. This is going on in Urbana. I have an acquaintance who lives happily in a self-storage unit in Urbana with all the creature comforts and his gun collection. In a sense, the exponential growth of self-storage over the past decade parallels the rise of Airbnb, tiny backyard houses, and rented duplexes in single-family neighborhoods. Tiny homes and residential backyards, for instance, have decimated residential communities in California with parking congestion, crime, trash accumulation, and fire threats. The misuse or potential misuse of storage units perhaps cannot be the most significant part of a zoning consideration, but I feel misuse should be considered by the Plan Commission in regard to the proximity of self-storage to residences for four reasons. First, the self-storage business is promoted as a new get-rich-quick scheme. The basis of this scheme is hands-off management. No office space required, no staff required, run from a cellphone in your pocket, no face-to-face contract with renters, and strong state laws to quickly evict renters and take possession of their locker contents if a rental payment is not made. Absentee management, little overhead and money on a regular basis. Don't ask, don't tell. Just get paid and turn a blind eye to violations of the contract. No mandated oversight, and no way to detect contract violations means no way to enforce contract use restrictions. Second, the misuses and potential misuses can be very dangerous to residences near the storage units. Unsupervised and unknown chemicals and chemical combinations can increase the risk of fire and the difficulty of fighting fires. Witness the recent fire just near Detroit just a few days ago. Canisters exploded and flew in the air and killed a person. The fire and explosion resulted from illegally stored materials, vaping materials, I believe. And also note the recent fire beneath the highway in Los Angeles that cost millions of dollars that resulted from unknown, unsupervised chemicals stored under the roadway. And witness the alarmingly large fire at the self-storage facility on Cunningham Avenue in Urbana in December of 2022. And note the increased need for decontamination facilities in our fire stations as the fires more and more involve toxic chemicals and materials. Remember, reloading of ammunition requires the storage of gunpowder. In addition, self-storage can also create more non-resident traffic, more trash, and can encourage the growth of rat and insect populations in nearby residences. Third, in Urbana and in many urban areas, there is a crying need for affordable housing and a need to provide shelter for those who cannot afford housing. Self-storage cannot be the answer to those problems. People are living in self-storage units in Urbana. This creates health and safety concerns in those living in the units and for residents nearby. Using the self-storage as residence creates trash and sanitary waste, increases traffic, encourages the growth of rodent populations. Fourth and finally, and most alarmingly, there is no public inspection of self-storage units. A recent News Gazette article spelled this out. Both Urbana and Champaign inspect only the open areas of self-storage facilities, but not the contents of the lockers. The lockers are considered private property and require a search warrant to be inspected by the owners or the police. The police encourage residents to report any misuses they observe, but until the contents of self-storage lockers can be monitored and inspected, they should be located in industrial areas. It is unsafe to locate them near any residential areas. For these four reasons, I think you should consider non-contractual potential misuse when you discuss the zoning of self-storage facilities in Urbana and its proximity to residences. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission in favor of this proposed change? Anyone that wishes to address the commission that is opposed to the proposed change? Staff, do you have any comments on the comments?
I do not.
All right. All right, if there's no one else that would like to address the commission, we'll declare the public input portion closed and now go into discussion amongst the commission and possibly entertain a motion to vote. So is there any discussion on the proposal? Ms. You?
So when Kevin presented the case, what I was thinking is that to have the self-storage in B three, that exactly that proximity to the neighborhood introduced the convenience of it. Not everyone have a car to get around. But I do have to admit that I know little about how people use the self-storage. So, yeah.
Any other discussion? I will say, I, I think this may be appropriate. My initial sense when this was presented in the staff memo is that we don't have a lot of information. I know this is an issue that other communities and other cities are tackling. It would be interesting to hear what other places are doing to help inform our decision. My question, and, you know, several of the comments from, or the comment from the public addressed, you know, the incompatibility maybe of this with residential uses. Ms. You pointed out why this may be something that is necessary to be adjacent to residential uses in some situations. It seems like a sort of blunt instrument to remove it, and maybe we need some more nuance to allow something like this. I mean, there are B three zoned parcels that are adjacent to or if not surrounded by industrial parcels, as far as I could tell. But I don't know, if this is the, the right way to address the problem. I agree that it's not something, something that doesn't make a whole lot of sense in corridors that we would like to see transformed over time to, you know, be something that's more vibrant and dynamic. But we also have areas of B three where maybe this makes sense and where it fits within the surrounding context. So that's my concern, is that this is a little blunt and that we don't have a lot of information to make a decision on. But any other comments or discussion? Are we ready to make a motion?
So I'm still thinking through this. On one side, there are already quite a few of them, and they can be operating for quite a long time, maybe forever. It's just that we're limiting the new supplies of self-storage units in B three. So what is that limiting new supply is going to do?
That's, that was my point, to say that, you know, normally when we would consider a change, a text amendment like this, it would be as a result of some study by staff to, you know, better understand what the impact is and why the proposed need was changed, or why the proposed change was needed. I don't think that we necessarily have that information here tonight. I think, you know, the original rezoning of the property on High Cross Road, part of the rationale had to do with how long it had been vacant. My question earlier about how long these parcels had been vacant before they became self-storage units, I don't think it's irrelevant. I mean, we're weighing less-than-ideal use with land that's vacant that the city provides services to, but doesn't get very much from in terms of revenue because of the value. So, yeah, it's not, it's not ideal, certainly in some of the places where this currently exists, but.
That would be, that would be my.
Ms. Sims?
Yeah, so my only wondering is, I would love a little bit more information about if you change the ordinance, what's the, you know, what would be the capacity in industrial zones? Like, is there enough capacity? Where would that be located? What would be, you know, when you're weighing the public impact, what would be the cost to people, you know, in neighborhoods that are maybe more economically margin, where transportation is an issue or even students? I would just, I guess I would want to know, are we only looking at the far outskirts where there's no public transportation, there's no access? I just would get, need a better sense of where we would be relegating people for future development?
Mr. Hopkins.
I'm still flying my plane and trying to reconstruct it in flight. It's a Metcalf alert, am I the only one getting this?
Hi, everyone. 9/11, 911 is not functioning, apparently. Good thing the police department is down the hall.
So you just have quieter alert signals than I do? I guess. I have to be able to hear, which I'm not good at, I mean, I don't have good hearing. So back to trying to fly the plane while reconstructing it, which is, I think what Mr. Albert is talking about and Ms. Yu. So what would be the immediate effect of this, to do it now as opposed to later? And the immediate effect that I'm aware of is it might change the behavior of two currently existing conditional permitted projects, different from the one we have already potentially affected on.
No, one of those is that one.
So there's only one other.
Yeah, one other one.
So there's one other. So that could be an effect of doing it now instead of later. That's the only effect I can think of that affects the urgency of doing this with the information we have. The, the flip side is, knowing where we are and our lack of capacity has been highlighted by speakers tonight. It might be a long time before we're able to actually deal with this, and there might be other instances which would arise that would also be affected. And it's probably not good practice to bring this up every time we need to scare somebody We might be accused of such behavior, which is not desirable. So obviously, I'm thinking out loud. I, I think the, in the end, what we want is a major revision that defines different kinds of self-storage facilities that have different abilities to regulate their use and contents. For example, no auto access to your self-storage, which I have used such a self-storage in another locale, and I think the one on University Avenue in Champaign was like that for a while. That is, there are ways to define these things that make them make sense for students who don't have cars and are on campus, that are different from the kind that we have on Philo Road, and have different abilities to be used in that way. If they're limited in size, they're on the second floor, they're on a corridor, a lot of the things mentioned, lot less likely to happen. And I think we need to do, we need to figure that out, but we're not going to figure that out soon. So the question in my mind is, do we want to deter more of the kind we're getting in B3 now and therefore do this, recognizing it's, you know, something we need to come back to and do a better job of, or do we want to just let it be?
Ms. Yu.
So that's kind of why I asked the question, what prompt this tax amendment? If it's as one of the two ways that can solve the High Cross Road issue, we solve that issue. So given that, is this really necessary?
Yeah, Mr. Rose.
I see that the same way. We have three choices here, to approve, to deny, or to take no action.
Yeah, you're saying in theory, we have three choices.
Yeah, I guess, but if, but if it's been proposed to us.
Yeah, I would hesitate to not give a recommendation, because I think counsel is looking to us to provide a recommendation about what to do on this. But I'd prefer that we either, you know, end up making a recommendation to approve or reject to Mr. Hopkins and Ms. Yu's comments. Yeah, I too am scratching my head to understand, you know, this was, to me, clearly, you know, one of two ways to, to address the issue on High Cross Road. Now that that's resolved, I don't get the sense, you know, that this was broken before this was brought to us. This is not something that we've heard anything about. It's not to say that there are not, you know, this is not, this is something, right, that other communities are, are addressing. It's something out there, but what exactly is the problem for us in Urbana, that's unclear to me right now. We have a conditional use permit process that these have to go through, and I'm assuming that they're being granted their conditional use permit because they meet the criteria of the conditional use permit. Mr. Hopkins.
There's limitations on the conditional use permit of what they can do if the Zoning Board of Appeals, that, as I understand it, would not allow them to, for example, distinguish between, I can't remember the name of it, but the one hidden on Philo Road, between the former Kroger and the former Kmart that have been turned into big, wide-open facilities.
Still not working.
Can I jump in here? I feel like there might have been a question there. Could I say something here? Because, okay, so, so for conditional use permits, the Zoning Board of Appeals can do a lot of things. So it's, it says it's including but not limited to the following, so, you know, these things, but then also other things. Although number seven on here, when I get to it, you'll wonder why it says not limited to, because I think it covers it. Anyway, you can regulate the location, extent, and intensity of the use. You can require screening by means of fences, walls, or vegetation. You can stipulate the required minimum lot sizes. You can regulate vehicular access and volume. You can, it says conformance to health, safety, and sanitation requirements as necessary, increases to the required yards, and any other conditions deemed necessary to affect the purposes of the zoning ordinance. So they've got quite a bit of leeway. But they also have the ability in the three criteria to say that it doesn't make sense for that particular location. Correct, yeah, and that is, again, all three of them, which you'll recall, I stated all three of them earlier, right? I only said two, so I'll go through all three. All right, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at that location, that the use is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located, or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare, and that the proposed use conforms to the applicable, applicable regulations and standards of, and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, except where such regulations and standards are modified by Section 7-7, which, that section is just about, just about, that's a special use procedures for utility or public buildings and adaptive reuse of school buildings and church buildings. So that hardly ever gets used, that piece.
Okay, so I read that to mean that if they wanted to, the Zoning Board of Appeals could make the distinction between those two types on Philo Road.
I think they could, probably with that vehicular access piece, if they said, you can do it, but it has to be, you know, inside a building, and you can't have drive-up units.
Right, okay. So that, that says to me that what we need, what, what we could do is send a signal that we think this is an issue. And return, I think there's a way we do this, return the proposal to staff for future study. We get to do this, just like the council, I can't remember. But my purpose is twofold, not to pretend that you've got time to deal with this in the short run, but to keep it alive and be on public record that we consider it an issue that needs to be dealt with. So that somebody proposing to do one would realize they might have to contend with something in the future that would be more complicated. It's a signaling device, basically.
Yeah, could we, I just, sorry, I just wonder if we could do it the other way? Because I can anticipate based on, you know, is, that this is a prob, could be a problem, right? And so that if we went with the recommendation, then people could still, right, in, 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 still apply for a conditional, they couldn't go the other way?
Initiate that.
Yeah, so I guess I was thinking if we change it so that you can't have storage units in B3 and only primarily in industrial property, right, like that would be the recommendation?
It would be to only allow them in industrial, yeah.
Yeah, so that if hypothetically some, something came up, couldn't there be some, like if there was some amazing, what you were envisioning, not intrusive with no industrial property, like, I don't know, like a residential storage, something, I don't know, that they could apply for a conditional use permit? No.
No.
We eliminate the option, we go, okay, all right, that's helped me.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we could, I mean, I would prefer not, that we not go back and forth on things, right? So if we say, well, let's be precautious and eliminate it, and then we, you know, have staff look at this issue and find that, oh, you know, there's actually a need or a reason for these to be in these locations, then we'd be in the situation of having to reverse ourselves, and I'd prefer that we don't do that.
So I'd make a motion if I could figure out what this item is.
Can I, can I speak to what Lou was talking about a minute ago? If you're following along at home, Section 11-7 amendments, item E, says that the Plan Commission may by majority vote postpone, continue, or adjourn from time to time any public hearing. In the event of such postponement, continuation, or adjournment, further publication of such action need not be made. So the way I'm reading that is you could say, I don't know why it uses all three of those words, and why, whichever word you choose. So if you said, we wanted to postpone this to some future date, you, you could do that, and you don't have to be explicit there in when exactly you wanted us to, to return with it.
So what you're saying is that a good formal way to do what I want to do is to postpone it, because that saves the hassle of.
Re-noticing.
That, that would save the hassle of rezoning it.
Reposting it.
Yeah, sorry.
Just want to be clear.
I mean, that does, so we've had, we've had cases in the past, though, that have hung out there for a couple of years. They give Terry headaches because she likes to keep nice, clean records for us. And I, I honestly can't say when we would get to it. I'll just, I'll just be honest with that, with you on that.
Well, I think before we go that route, we should also have in mind clear steps that we would want staff to undertake.
I, I have faith in Terry's record-keeping. It's worked for, the 20 years, so I've been around. The intent is that this become incorporated explicitly in a process of major rezoning, major revision of the zoning ordinance, which is going to immediately follow the someday completion of the plan process.
That is the plan, yes.
And that it, that the way to do it in order to get the signaling effect that I want in the public is to postpone this item for development by the staff in conjunction with revision of the, other revisions of the zoning ordinance.
Was there?
And that's vague enough that it could come back to us as a single item with commentary about how it relates to other potential things or whatever, or it could come back as, you know, one piece of a major rewrite.
Was there a I-move at the start of that?
Yeah, so there's an I-move at the part of, at the start of that, and a 2484 T24 case number after the I-move.
So we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rose. Are you pretty clear on the wording of that? Ms. Garcia?
I am, and we, you know, and we have the, the tape to go back to.
Okay. Is everyone else pretty clear on the wording of that, on the Commission? Good to go? Any discussion of the motion? All right, seems like we're ready to vote. We have a real call, please.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Allroad?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, and we will not have a date for counsel.
That's correct.
Okay, new business, is there any new business?
I think you skipped old business and new public hearings.
You're right.
Of which there are none.
Old business, we have no old business, new public hearings, we have no new public Yeah, no new business, audience participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Commission, the Plan Commission, for five minutes uninterrupted on a topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in. All right, take that as a no. Staff report, do we have a staff report?
I can't recall if last time, the last time we actually had, had a quorum and had a meeting, if I said that the UCSD rezoning went through counsel.
No, I didn't, I think you did.
Okay, so, that's my staff report.
All right. No study session, no closed session. Just want to check to make sure that we have sufficient documentation from staff and the attorney regarding the first case and the findings that we adopted.
Yes, that's sufficient.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.